Into the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual liberty, justice, law. The clerk please do the roll.
Yeah.
Here.
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 All right, we have a forum. Next we have a presentation adjourned proceedings, we have a motion to approve the city council minutes from September fourteenth, twenty twenty-one. Is there a motion? Motion by Alderman Roll is the second of Alderman Fairwell on the question. Not please do the roll.
Aye.
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 All right, various also like to notify the council, we are on camera, now with the eye in Scott. Hi. Now the camera's on, it's recording, so everything's the way it should be. It's our fix now with the new audio system that was coordinated with the police department, I believe. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
All right, so public comments, public comment.
Good evening, Mayor, Your Honor, great counsel, Senator Johnson. My name is Thomas Madrigal, I'm the one thirty-four, twenty-seven Mozart, and let's talk to somebody before the meeting, I'm a type for, I'm a member for people, Musk has been out of town occasion. I come city council not to air my dirty laundry stuff, I don't, I don't do that, there's people I hear this come talk stupid, come on, no, I'm here concerned, you know, my, here for a while, matter of fact, I'm kind of honorary precinct captain, my body weight, living over there more or less, so I talk to people, so what, you know, and I tell the people, you gotta come too, not just me, you know, because they see that camera, oh, Tom, Tom, well, you come, yeah, but here's a few things that we don't, in my neighborhood, last couple years, my neighbor across the street, across the alley in California, they're always constantly playing loud music from six, seven o'clock on till, I mean, it's just boom, 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 I call police and they go there and after second time, I think they shut it down, but they, they, they should give those people ticket, because I, I talked, I have a lot of neighbors, my residents are elderly, you know, they don't want that, so I don't, I don't know what the, you know, it's our ordinance, but you gotta talk to those people, because that's not, you know, my wife, she's pretty busy and she likes to sleep early, so forth, and it's not, it's not acceptable, and also too, I was walking neighbors this past week, and neighbors tell me, Tom, how, how come my neighbors don't have city stickers still? I got them, my two vehicles, and they don't, what's, what's going on, how come they don't issue, because over the hundred thirty, Fifth Street, in, in Francisco, there's a lot of cars there that don't have stickers, I don't know why, so hopefully the police could stop by there, you know, you know, see what's going on there more or less, and lastly, on Sunday, especially Sunday, the, the corner store in Hilargos, Broadway, Broadway, California, there's always cars parked at the corner, you can't see, you try to go out northbound, and, you know, these, as it is, these cars are flying eastbound to beat the gates, the railroad gates, and, you know, matter of fact, I called the police that morning, ask, get somebody on patrol the area there, and also too, now that Bethel Church is getting a lot of people going to, go to church, traffic's fine there, and I notice there's a lot of kids, small, parents with their kids cross the street, I was wondering if the police could go around there by between eleven, twelve o'clock, just monitor, because these people are just flying down the street more or less, you know, but, and also too, lastly, when I, I called in on the Saturday night, and all those people, and I had a nice police officer, Officer Adrian Ortiz, nice man, very nice, and just, that's nice that the city could have nice people like him able to talk to you, but sometimes you get some police officers, they're, they're hard asses, you can't do that, I had a friend of mine years ago, which says Lucy's a, the police chief from New York, he told his people, listen, you go out there, you control, you say hi to the people, because they pay your taxes, I mean, they pay your salary with their taxes, so it's nice to have Officer Ortiz, give a kudos to him, nice guy, so forth, and I tell him I was a cop, people know I was a cop in Dallas, Texas, in the mid-eighties, but I don't want that no more, but thank you much for hearing my concerns.
Mr. Madrigal, I just wanted to point out, as a veteran, something I was gonna talk about earlier, later on, but a couple things, it's a lot of small things this administration is tackling on, a lot of small things that add up to a lot of bigger things, and it always bothered me that the three flagpoles on Western Avenue were vastly undersized flags, they were meant for fifty-foot poles, that has been rectified, and when we went there, we also replaced the bulbs, so now they're nicely lit, and also about ten years ago, they meant the flagpole in front of City Hall was removed when they did sidewalk work, and never was replaced, so we ordered a new flagpole, within the next two, three weeks, we'll have a new flagpole, a real flagpole in front of City Hall.
Appreciate it.
I wanted to make that your attention, you're a veteran, you know, I always felt with the flag displayed, but on your way home today, if you pass the bridge, take a look at that nice flag, about nineteen by, nineteen by fifteen footer or something that's up there.
Because I tell people, I was a cop about six months, you know, I had twelve friends, that flag was taped with their coffin, that's, that stands for freedom, I mean, this, I kinda wanna get to, but it's, you know, a lot of people appreciate United States, I mean, I don't know why they don't, but I could tell many people, anytime, if you don't like it here. Thank you much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Any other public comments?
Good evening, everyone, Alan Stevo, Alan Stevo, I'd like to ask, how many Aldermen attended the New Civil League Educational Convention this past weekend? Any Aldermen? Any other city officials attend that very important meeting, conference, any other elected Will New Street, West Maple, Maple Avenue be rebuilt this year?
Alderman, I asked Robyn, since I took office, what projects were out there, and you keep referencing this project in New York, yes, they were very bad condition, I can attest, they're one of the worst ones in town, amongst others, that are bad in town, but it was never, as you said, approved, CDBG, nothing, there's no documentation of that being done, the previous mayor announced that, I have no knowledge of that, the CDBG project for this year was Hundred Nineteenth Place, which we're finalizing now, so I got back to you from your concerns from the previous meeting, I agree that street needs to be done, by all means, it should be a priority for the next round of streets being done.
You said the previous mayor did not, it did say that it was not approved?
I said, I'm not sure what he said or what he didn't say, however, we have no documentation that the street was ever approved, never was approved by city council to be done, or committee level, so I just wanted to make it clear, not like a street was going to be done and not being done, Hundred Nineteenth Place was the most recent street approved being done.
My understanding was approved by committee, Eric Alvarez handled it, and the reason he wanted to do that this year, and not New York Street, was because it fell within the parameters, it was very close, and he's afraid if you wait any longer, it won't qualify.
York Street, York Street's not being done either.
Eric Alvarez wanted that done.
I understand, Eric Alvarez also left the country, but I don't think York Street's being done either, Mr. Stevo.
Well, there's no reason New Street couldn't have been done, no reason.
I understand, it does need to be done.
Read all, the read all, Aldermen, were given a legislative council by kind mayor Vargas.
I'd like to correct you also on this, it was veto, we get a whole right of veto, Alderman, I'm just dragging your memory here.
When will you start to work with the independent Aldermen and give them a legislative council?
I'm working very well with all the Aldermen, not just independent, veto, whatever you wanna call them, all the Aldermen have an easy phone number to get ahold of me, and I always answer my phone.
When will you give them a legislative council?
That is, my issue was brought up and was denied.
It was good for you, why isn't it good for them?
There was different issues, different circumstances, Alderman.
Not at all, the same thing, same thing, check and balance, it's a check and balance system.
I understand your concern, and you got me in dialogue, so what else you got?
Oh, yeah, I think you just don't wanna cooperate with them, and hopefully, hopefully they'll wake up.
How's your summer been, Mr. Stevo?
If you would have accepted the five million dollars from Central South, Mayor Vargas would have had the money to buy new ALS ambulances, new fire trucks, rebuild streets.
Alderman, I like to say it was three million dollars in agreement, but never went to city council.
And the City Hall would not have been weakened.
That's fine, you can reiterate the same stuff, I'd just like to correct you on some items, that's all, go on.
Go ahead.
I just did.
All right, you could not accept the five million dollars because you're afraid it would make Mayor Vargas look too good, five million dollars, you couldn't accept.
Your opinion, I, I stayed in my opinion, next.
Well, did you accept, that's, it's my opinion.
Never went to council.
It's in black and white.
Alderman, never went to council, you said it.
You say it, you say it on it, you say it on it.
It's never went to council because we wouldn't prevent it.
The finance committee would not permit.
It has to be said.
Yeah, it has to be said.
Go on, Mr. Stevo, Alderman.
Alderman, we have a conundrum here, a conundrum, if the mayor does work, while he's working at the school district for the city of Blue Island, he would be considered stealing, conversely, if he does work here while he's a mayor, under mayoral hours, he does work for the school district, he would be considered stealing from the city, that's, that's what I call a conundrum, that's a conundrum. When you count all the votes for mayor, count them all up, the results will show that you won by seventy-seven votes, you won by seventy-seven votes, and you are the previous administration, as much as you tried to deny it, you are the previous administration.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Moving on to old business, I'll open up with this one, just stating my own personal opinion, and again, this has to be something, if we do decide to move forward down this train, we have to stand together, because this is a very highly controversial topic. I am vaccinated, I was one of the first ones, the teacher, back in January, I got my booster, I'm, I got my booster, I got my secondary shot in February, I'm a proponent of vaccinations, that's just my personal opinion, I wanted to lay it out there in case there was any questions from the council beforehand, that being said, school districts like my own, where everybody I know works in public bodies, they pass some kind of policy, being mandatory, non-mandatory, reporting, testing weekly, whatever it is, we need to do something, so it's back on the agenda, and I know it's a controversial topic, but I wanted to lay it on the line, my opinion, my opinion is I'm a vaccinated person, I prefer vaccinations, but again, I'm not speaking for the city in mandating anything, because again, I don't want anybody on the outside here because it's a controversial topic, so I'll open up the floor in case we wanna amend or debate this even more, but eventually we should do something.
This is quite, I wasn't here at the last meeting, and I, it looked to me like it passed the last meeting.
It was, it was tabled.
They passed the table. Oh, I see, thank you, and while I, I'm gonna, yes, agree heartily with you, and there are a number of reasons why vaccinations are critical to the health of this country, the economic health of this country, in a lot of ways, the future of this country, when I was a kid, we all lined up for polio vaccinations, and we, you know, we really weren't given a choice, and we don't have polio anymore, if you grew up with polio, that was a damn terrifying thing that nobody was, and I am so happy that I don't have that, and our kids don't have that in our lives, had this gone properly, we could have been basically without COVID in this country by this point, there are twenty-five percent of the adult population currently that has not gotten vaccinated, as they say, this is now a pandemic of the unvaccinated, they are filling up our hospitals, they are delaying surgeries for other people, and probably the worst potential thing, and it's not inevitable, but it's possible, it's been made possible because of this, is that the Delta virus is out there and circulating, and as we all know, viruses mutate and mutate and mutate, currently, fortunately, those of us who have been vaccinated are protected from the Delta virus, but the Delta virus could now turn into something, because it's being allowed to circulate, that none of us will be protected from, and if you think the last year of the act been awful, you won't even know, it'll look good compared to what could happen, so I am a thousand percent in favor of a very stringent vaccination policy.
Thank you. Alderman, correct.
Do we know how many employees are not vaccinated?
We do not, because we never passed a policy, unless my administrators know something, we don't, we need to pass a policy first, and that's why we're behind the gun, at least compared to other municipalities that I've talked to, and also work for, and they've all passed policies at this point already, I'd like to, if we wanna go through this and hammer this out, it's a smaller agenda tonight, if there's ticking points in here that we want to amend, I have no problem doing that.
Alderman.
Well, I'm vaccinated myself, and my husband is, and I believe in vaccinations, my concern is that if we demand that people be vaccinated, that they, especially the unions, will bring a lawsuit against the city, and I don't know that this is something that we wanna get into, when it's probably going to be settled at the state level, then we won't have to take it for ourselves.
Thank you, Alderman, I have similar thoughts, however, anything we approve, then they would have a right to bargain the language we approve, so that, that opportunity still is out there for us to negotiate with the unions.
Any other public, any other comments on this? Alderman Johnson.
Yes, Mayor, I'm, I'm vaccinated myself, but I'm still, you know, kind of up in arms in, in a sense, or not sure, because I know some people are, you know, they don't wanna get vaccinated for whatever reason, that they should have a testing, COVID testing, you know, to make sure that when they come in, or that they're not, you know, infected, but, you know, when you dealing with people that have already compromised immune systems, you know, from illnesses around children, things of that nature, those things should be also taken into consideration, and maybe sitting at the table with somebody, you know, collecting bargaining units, in order to try to come up with a cohesive plan that, that could work, you know, I know I've been hearing a lot of different things, people talking about going up on people who are not vaccinated, like two, three thousand dollars more, many insurances and things of that nature, having them have a daily COVID testing, have that swallowed, you know, no tend to, might, you know, deter a lot of things from continuing to happen where they might wanna be vaccinated.
I was, Alderman, I agree, and it is a stringent, strict one that's written in front of you, we can always approve something, then send it to the bargaining units.
Okay.
You know, but we have to start somewhere, and normal procedure is the board, or the city council, or whatever you wanna call it, approve something, and then send it over to the unions, or they demand a right to bargain, actually, what's their, what they're gonna do, but we preemptively talk to all four unions and say, hey, this is what we pass, but the council wants your opinion, that we were starting something, otherwise our next committee's not for another two weeks.
Police Department, you can contact with me.
So we already have one.
About their opposition to this, and they want to write some type of position statement on their objections to the required vaccinations, in order to what we heard in the last conference meeting.
This is almost like a little bargaining.
So, so this is actually just being put on the table to work with, which is not like.
If someone makes a motion like that.
It would have disciplinary actions to the people.
Right now, what we pass is what we pass, but we can pass it pending negotiations with the union.
Okay.
Add that to the motion.
Okay.
That way, yes, this is our, our, our guidelines, that the council would like, what do you guys wanna do?
Can I make a motion to table?
That, we already tabled it once, Alderman, I'd like to move this forward to the unions, to get their opinions, otherwise this table's not for work, I don't think it's that big, that this issue is, we're hung up on where we can call a special meeting over, there is issues in here we wanna take out or remove, let's do it, or we pass it pending, right my threat, pending the union.
We'll just pass it, and then we would, you know, change it, or whatever impact they felt was, I know already what some of their concerns are, the discipline, the incentives, and then mandatory vaccine by a certain date or termination.
That's gonna be the biggest one.
Those are the big three issues.
That's the biggest one, my union, I'm not part of, my former union, that was, that I was bargained out of our school district, that one issue, everything else they love to love, but again, I'm opening it up, I'd like to pick this one forward.
Can I just give clarification, because, I mean, reading, reading the minutes, maybe they're not right, but I'm reading the minutes, and it says it was passed, it should just be corrected, if that's not true.
It would definitely table, so if the minutes are reflected, then they'll.
Still, we gotta talk about it, so is there, is there a motion to send us to bargaining? Can we phrase it like that?
So what are you, what are you wanting to do?
We wanna pass a policy.
So you wanna pass this policy and stand?
I'm up to getting something on paper, so we'll get the ball rolling, I am not hard lining on anything right now, because I wanna get this moving forward, so how do we legally do that, so the ball continues to move forward, that it can be negotiated?
Yeah, we'll have to take it off the table, and then we'll just, we'll cap it, if that's what we're gonna do, or, you know, we'll vote on whether we're passing it or not, then we'll send it to the, say, we would like to impact bargaining.
And then we'll come back to the council, to.
Yeah. So we can do what. I mean, it, it may or may not have to come back to the council, depends on what, what we bargained for.
I, I do know what, where I work, if you're not vaccinated, it's not mandatory, they don't make you, but you do have to go get tested once a week.
Right.
I do know, my daughter, where she goes to college, no matter whether you're vaccinated or not, you have to go weekly and go get tested.
I'm very similar, Alderman, where I work, I had approved my card, I already did that.
Right.
And then if not, the teacher would have to.
One time, and go get tested a week.
This policy, this policy is written, it was written, and if you're not vaccinated, you have to take COVID tests for the next month or so, whatever the period is, every week, and have a negative test before you return to work, but if you're not vaccinated by, let's say it's November one, I probably don't date the date, then you're terminated, that's what this policy states.
Oh, I don't.
And it's a discipline for not doing it, incentives for doing it, and things like that.
Because the only thing is, if it's somebody, let's just say part of the religious belief or whatever, trying to make somebody on the job, it's, it's where it's.
There are religious exceptions, there are cultural exceptions.
But what I'm saying is, is we only voting for it, like, if the ball rolls, so we can negotiate with the bargaining.
But this sounds like they'll terminate if you don't.
I'm just saying.
There are, there are. Yeah, no, no matter what we do, there are, we see, and everybody said they're going to demand a bargain, so we're bargaining with them no matter what.
I mean, again, I'm vaccinated, I believe in it, I, I agree with you, with polio, but I'm just saying, for all people, I don't know if I agree with termination, but go get tested once a week, and it's negative.
Just as a, you know, again, a point of observation on that, because the Delta variant is so virulent.
Yeah.
We can test, we can not have, we have to test twice a week.
Yeah. Because the thing is, you can fall in between.
Right.
Between there, but when you, when you're talking about, first I'm fine, they don't know the situation, they're going, and then when they come back to the house, whatever they infect, four or five.
Right.
Your four or five weeks, and the four or five, five, they get infected, they shut it down.
I, I, I say, we make the motion, we already know we're bargaining with the police, and then it's already going to the police, they already demanded a bargain, so the other two are gonna follow suit.
Right.
So we need a motion then to put, pass this, and then the ball will start going.
Come back to council.
Alderman Johnson, is there a second? Alderman Fairwell on the question.
Question is, we send it out to the union, and then it come back to council.
On certain cases, as the attorney said, certain cases only, if something major, we have to change.
In regards to termination?
They're gonna bargain that out, Alderman, I, I wouldn't think that's, that's, that's gonna happen anymore.
I don't know that.
Well, I, I, you know, I would, I would suggest, I, I would recommend, but if not, then I would accept testing.
All right, so, are we okay, Alderman?
They already said.
They're demanding, they're demanding a bargain already, it's, it's gonna be changed.
The question is, do you wanna do this policy here, and then know that it's gonna be amended and changed if we attack bargain, or do you want to go through this policy, and make some updates right now, amendment?
They're gonna demand a bargain.
They go demand bargain, whatever amendment.
That's, that's my negotiation side of me, and I'm, I'm pro-vaccination, you always start with a stronger position, they're gonna demand a bargain anyway.
Well, I, I don't, I don't think that's our argument, the argument is, is the council gonna have knowledge of what's amended, what's not.
Their council will acknowledge on anything, however.
And widely agreeing to something.
Hypothetically, I couldn't answer that question correctly, but I'll make it very obvious, if the union does not want that change, you wanna make that change for them anyway, is that what you're saying? Because if they want that change, we have to vote on it anyway, it's gonna come back to council.
That's what she, she wants to know.
Yes, then, yes, they will have to come back to council.
I disagree with termination.
If the, if the union say great, why would we fight it? That's my point.
Because I don't know what that situation's.
Again, if you want to go out, there are concessions, you can, you can fight your council, there are concessions. All right, I, I'll, again, we have to stand together all as one, is there, if there is any hesitation, send us back to committee, but if there isn't, we have to stand together, I don't want any outliers, and then we are, we are destroying ourselves from the inside out, anything to do with union negotiations, we have to be together, so if we're not together on this, I have no issue then sending it back to committee, but it'll be October fourteenth.
I, I would prefer to move this along, as I'm sure you would, and, yeah. Like, with testing, I would agree, I might see this moving on.
And I can make it even better, how about this comes back to council regardless, it's going to, I, I just, I'll state the obvious, it's gonna come back to council, so then we need a motion, if you wanna make a motion second again, that we're gonna send this to the unions, and eventually it's gonna make its way to council, I don't know how else to phrase it.
Yeah.
Motion, yeah, agreeable to the people that made the motion seconded?
Yes.
Okay, all right, are we all together now for this, we can move forward?
Yes.
And I wouldn't spend so much time if it wasn't still hot for an issue nationally.
Well, it's getting to be winter time, Mayor, you gonna be picking up all kind of concerns and everything.
So, plan and then send the union this policy as a stand-stay.
Let's sit down.
Like, sit down and bargain about this, this has been passed, this has been passed.
All right.
We're gonna bargain with you about it, and then talk about it.
Yes, I like that, sounds good, yeah, go ahead and do that. Okay, so we have a motion with a second, on the question.
All right, we moved, clerk, you do the roll.
Alderman Johnson. Aye.
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 Aye. Motion, various, next, we have resolution of the city of Blue Island to authorize execution of a settlement agreement in case of eighteen W C three, four, six, seven, three, is this one was discussed before, or do you need to discuss this tonight?
Um, no, we've discussed this stuff before, it's been approved, we need to remove it from the table and then hold on it.
You need a motion to remove the table?
Yep.
Is there a motion to remove this table, Alderman Carr, is there a second? Alderman Johnson, all in favor?
Aye.
Are you opposed, or is there a motion to approve this resolution? Alderman Carr, seconded, aye. On the question, the roll call.
Aye.
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 Motion, various, we have a motion to approve payroll for September seventeen, twenty twenty-one, in the amount of three hundred and sixty-four thousand, eighty-seven dollars and nineteen cents, that's the gross amount, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Alderman Rita, is there a second? Alderman Fairwell on the question. Not, please do the roll.
Aye.
Alderman Fairwood. Aye.
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 Motion, various, next, we have a motion to approve the accounts payable for five hundred thousand, one hundred and three dollars and eighty-seven cents, is there a motion? Alderman Rita, seconded by Alderman Roll, just gonna keep your hand up the whole time, Alderman?
I was on my hand.
Next time I call you for a second, though.
And, and I never follow accounts.
Aye. On the question, on the question.
Alderman Farinwall.
I got a couple of questions. Again, I wanna thank, uh, Mark for giving me a bunch of answers. So save us all some time. But I have a few remaining questions and sorry, I fumbled here. So bring them up. So you want to bring? Uh, bear with me a second here. Oh, uh, just to note, um, Mark explained to me of, I asked, you know, kinda where we were on the Barton Pest Control, yeah, the program, and I certainly fully support. Um, we are over budget, twenty thousand bucks, you said, in, in one area. Is that correct? Or was that, but I'm confused yet with something else you said. That's right. That's right. So we're, we're within budget at this point. Close.
Pest control?
Yeah. We are, we are over budget.
I think you phrased it. It was over budget and a line item, but because it sits within the billing department, under budget, the whole department.
Okay, so we can still do it, which is.
We need it.
Clear. Oh, yeah.
Alderman Farinwall.
Yes, I don't, this is the. Okay, so I have a couple of points here and, uh, for. Uh, just a, a couple of requests, I guess, for Montana Welch. They've got a pretty well laid out, uh, bill here that is detailed. There's a few areas where like general managers is fifty-nine hundred bucks and ordinance is resuscitated ninety-one hundred bucks. Uh, maybe just get a little more detail. Yeah. Yeah.
So, uh, before you is a summary of all the accounts payables. I do have the actual invoice from Montana Welch that lays out in more detail. Um, my summary that I provided to you earlier today.
Right.
Uh, was simply a summary of the big ticket items within each individual question that you asked.
Okay, okay, right. Thank you.
Alright. Here, I, I think that's it. Thank you. Alderman, thank you. Alright, I was on the question. Are there any other questions? Please do the roll.
You know, this is my stance, my request for. Auto procedural or, uh, procedural audit. Because of things that we have, you know, kinda founded in the past and how we're gonna go on in the future. I want all the bills to be paid, of course. And that's the only reason why I'm voting yes.
Can I just make a suggestion, Alderman? I wonder if there's something, I know you've been asking this for a long time.
For, for rent.
It's important, it's important.
For, for rent, but a procedural, a procedural audit would be.
So, um, it would seem, would it, would it be possible, maybe in consultation with Mark or Tom, to determine any particular area that you're, you know, interested to start with? So that we can have control of the scope of it, I guess.
I believe I've had that discussion.
Okay, cause that would seem like rather than.
Also with the, the last audits.
Yeah, okay. So, so we can see what, how it turns out.
If I can get an answer back.
Okay.
We're starting off.
Oh. Yes.
Alderman Rita.
Yes.
Alderman.
Alderman Carr.
Aye.
Alderman Roll.
Alright. Motion carries next. We have the motion to authorize and approve the execution of the bid proposal between the city and Nickro Baca Roofing and paving company incorporated. For the roofing services for the police department garage and the fire department building. Just to remind the council, this is the, we went out to bid. Then we went out to bid again. We had three bids. This was the lowest bid. This came close to our estimates. And given the fact that everything is higher and this is a record of a company in business for over a hundred and twenty-five years. I'm surprised I've never heard of them, but they have definitely some track record. And, uh, so this is for the, again, police department garage and the fire department, the one we, we hashed out. So is there a motion? Alderman Farinwall, seconded by Alderman Roll on the question.
If it comes with, they, they come with warranty thing, right?
I think we asked for twenty years. It was twenty years, I think we asked for. Yeah.
Not only last year's.
And union. I, I, they, I, I looked it over too. I was surprised. I was, I never heard of them. I've heard of some big companies before, but I didn't hear, but they've been around for a long time.
Alright. Thank you.
Alright, any other questions? Now, please do the roll.
Aye.
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 Thank you. Yeah, there are state of Illinois license, everything they laid out in your, I think you got it in your packet too. Alright, our mayor's announcements. Street resurfacing repair has, some of the projects have begun. Um, the initial streets that are under construction right now are Irving, Chatham and Hoin from Vermont to Grove, Chicago and from Chicago, from Vermont to Fulton, Seeley from Vermont to the canal. And Chatham from Vermont to Grove. I reached out to, um, Robinson Engineering, who's also here tonight. They are working on Collins and Hundred Nineteenth Place with the same bidder that won't hold bids. So they wanna do the projects together. Do we have an updated date yet? I know we just talked a few hours ago, but anything yet?
I don't have an exact date just yet, but we have a pre-compress meeting, uh, for Hundred Nineteenth Place.
Okay. If you get a date, please let me know and I'll let the, Alderman know. Thank you. Um, as I said before, this administration is wanting to prioritize fixing the streets. Wherever we can get the funding for these streets, we're gonna find it. We all know the task ahead is a sizable one. We are going to utilize the resources we have as well maximize outside resource to make real progress. Our problem has been ignored for far too long. In the same vein, we continue to target and work to eliminate nuisance properties. This week, the destruction, the destruction of the former Maple Tree Inn began and actually they build in dirt today. It's, it's all gone. It actually came down in the afternoon. As many know, the burned out building had become not only an eyesore, but a breeding ground for many rodents in the neighborhood. We will continue to aggressively work to deal with all nuisance properties for the benefit of all residents. I believe our housing court this past Wednesday is a record amount of fines. Now, that's not something I wanna say very often, but we got a lot of attention. I'll give an example of that attention. We got the Mayfair building or Joe's Fruit Market, or whatever you wanna call it, pulled permits finally to remove the facade on the front. They already took the sign down. They built the garbage enclosure. It's more movement than we've seen in my entirety of being an Alderman. And, uh, they said they're gonna take the whole facade down and we tuck point the original stonework that's underneath. Huge movement. We got their attention. Newsletter. If you haven't noticed, um, I'll, I'll let you guys know now. We haven't had a water bill newsletter in pretty much my entire time as mayor. I think we only let it go, the one that was in print that, that one month afterwards. We're moving away from the insert in the water bill and are going to be doing possibly quarterly newsletters to communicate to the residents. This will be both cost-effective as well as more effective in getting the word out about what's happening in Blue Island. The first newsletters are just about complete and will be in mailboxes soon. I mentioned already about the flagpoles, small stuff like that. We ordered lights for underpasses. When I get more information, when that begins, I'll let the Alderman know. It's gonna be the Vermont Underpass, uh, west of Greenwood. The Broadway Underpass, um, west of Western on Broadway and the underpass of Gregory Street going over Vermont Street. These are very dark areas at night. Some don't have any lighting at all. And the minimal cost, uh, was gotten back to us and it was an easy thing to say yes, it's in the budget. Order some new LED lighting so we can light up those areas at night. But it's a lot of little stuff like that that the administration's working on. Just this past week, I met with two pastors from churches. We have a meeting scheduled to revamp our chorus report, to bring it back, uh, to, to point new people on there. Get our tree program officially through the city. And I agree with former, uh, Alderman and current Alderman that brought up that we should fund this, this line item and next year's appropriation. I'm a big tree supporter myself. We, I have a meeting with the hospital group and a separate doctors group that, uh, wants to bring urgent care back to town. But again, this is all preliminary stuff that I'm just giving across my agenda for this week. I'm meeting with a real estate agent in town. About how he handles certain properties. We have a meeting with streetscaping this week. There's a lot of little stuff like that that adds up to a lot. And once stuff gets to fruition where the council needs to vote on something through committee, I'll send things to committee. There's a lot of little stuff like this that adds up to bigger things. So that's my update for tonight. Just wanted to give a little synopsis. Under city clerk, city clerk's announcements.
You have a second update, um, still right now. As of now, we're still ahead of that year this time. Uh, welcome back. Excited that we're gonna go out the front, chamber first, because people are still, um, turning papers in and. Well, I'm ready, uh, committee's meeting. We have a public event at October fifteenth, on Friday day, uh, from six to nine. We wrap on Thursday, a couple of charts. There's a, a bit of interest in the, 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 before the light break, it's, uh, tech day. Um, a new day we're starting. Um, I met with several people this week is Day of the Dead. I was, um, not really sure what it was, so my assignment was to come home and watch Coco. So I watched Coco and I thought a little bit about it. And I met with some very nice, um, people and they're helping me and we're together going to, uh, Day of the Dead in about a second on New York and Western at six o'clock. Um, the committee, we will have a few vendors, so if anyone would like to, um, sell something for Day of the Dead, there's applications at the city clerk's office. Um, and if you have pictures, I believe, that's what they do with, you have pictures and you, um, are happy, it's not the originals, stuck up in the clerk's office, so we can hang them up if you wanna bring them that night. And if you have an agent, uh, additional information, please contact, um, clerk's office.
I'm sorry, that was six P M, November second?
Yes, and I think you read that, some people already have the, the, the. I stated that, um, at cover clock in the church, but the priest is gonna come over and fix the clock to do. And, um.
Thank you. City treasurer. Uh, no announcements at this time, mayor. Uh, also no report. I will have, uh, monthly treasures report ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty-one at our next city council. Thank you. Next, we have resolution to authorize the execution. These were all discussed.
Yeah, so the first resolution is to authorize a settlement agreement in case number eighteen W C zero, one, one, seven, one, seven, which is the Chicagorillo Workers' Comp Settlement Agreement that we discussed in the committee the whole meeting.
Is there a motion? Alderman Farinwall, seconded by Alderman Johnson. Any other questions? Now, clerk, please do the roll.
Aye.
Aye.
Alderman Rita.
Aye.
Alderman. Alderman Carr.
Aye.
Alderman Roll.
Aye.
The next, um, number is an ordinance authorizing the vacation of an alley in the Blue Island Bridge subdivision of the city of Blue Island. It's the vacation of a portion of the alley behind Tower Car Wash in exchange for that company dedication of certain of their property. As well as their agreement to beautify, uh, their property in the city. These plaques have been, uh, reviewed and, uh, approved by Robinson and the ordinance has, have also been reviewed by the building department.
Next, to rag everybody's memories, the next two motions. Alderman, do you have a question? Johnson?
No.
Okay. Alright, ready? Okay. Is there a motion? Alderman Johnson, is there a second? Alderman Farinwall on the question. Now, clerk, please do the roll.
Aye.
Alderman.
Aye.
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 Thank you. The next is the other half of this.
Yeah, number three is ordinance authorizing the dedication of a portion of the lot in the Blue Island Bridge subdivision in the city and this is just a plaque that dedicates, uh, property to the city.
Is there a motion, Alderman Johnson? Is there a second? Alderman Roll on the question. Please do the roll.
Aye.
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 Motion carries.
Next up is a resolution to ratify an intergovernmental agreement between I dot and the city of Blue Island. It's going to allow the city to receive a grant to provide a traffic enforcement program to employ.
No motion? Motion Alderman Rita, seconded by Alderman Carr on the question. Please do the roll.
Aye.
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 Periods. Next, we have Aldermanic announcements, reports, and comments. Johnson.
Yes, um. Mayor, I would like to see if we could, uh, something about that railroad. I know we fixed, still fixed on the bridge. Maybe we need to wait that and see if we can fix something about that western railroad.
Hundred thirty-fifth?
Yeah.
So hundred thirty.
Might buy metal, side of that place.
So, uh, just an update on that. Again, I'm hesitant on making public, big public announcements, but there is a study, big paper by the federal government. In conjunction with the village deposit, that's going to look into the viability of them funding underpasses or overpasses between, uh, the canal, the Calsec Channel, which would encompass that crossing all the way to a hundred and forty-seven. I think there's four crossings in total between that distance and through Congressman Bobby Rush and, uh, the village deposit. They threw on and, and it was the last second, right after I was sworn in the office, the president reached out and said, would you like us to throw you in on this because we can easily bump it up to the canal? I said, by all means, yes, it's not gonna cost us anything. So they are doing that now, for sure. That was approved, the study. One step at a time is baby steps, but that's, it's, something's moving with that, that situation.
So you mean Bobby Rush finally did something on this side of a hundred and ninety?
I can't, I can't comment on any of politics. I know the, the, the village president of the posen reached out and I agreed to jump on board. Didn't cost the city any money.
Thank you for jumping on board, mayor. But I, I think too also, uh, the reason why those railroads are like that, because the rail, the train actually runs on the rails. It's the heavy weight that's from the trucks. There's overweight that pushes the asphalt down and make those ruts and things of that nature to make those tracks so hard. I mean. Not hard, but difficult to cross. And I was gonna, uh, see if we could get, uh, Chief Fire some help or something. Get some more people, uh. Yes, certified for, uh, truck weights, you know. I don't know how we set on that a lot here, even with. But I know, uh, a couple of the, uh, the cycling places said that we could use their scales and things of that nature before.
Chief, I see you wanna comment.
Uh, yes, thank you so much. Um, Alderman, uh, to your concern, we have an officer assigned to the truck enforcement school, uh, this month or early next month. He will be his own unit. We are in, uh, talks with, um, tri-state disposal on Ashland. These are scales as well. Uh, so we are, we are, you know, moving forward, but I didn't realize it was concerned of yours. It definitely is, uh, one of ours.
We have the same concerns along Vermont Street here.
Yep.
It's a, it's a, we know Vermont's a bypass. It's not meant to have this kind of traffic, but when things get closed down like Hundred Twenty-seventh Street from time to time. Somebody's gonna go somewhere and they always use Vermont, which is a pedestrian street. It's a street, it's a street, it's a, they road. It's a very narrow, um, residential street. So that's just one of these.
And the bridge.
And the thing, and the thing with that as well, mayor, uh, is that one, we really don't even have money to fix the streets. So we're, you know, hustling and bustling on that. But a lot of the streets are not rated for those type of weights. And so therefore you have sewer collapsing, uh, uh. In, in the patients in the road, things of that nature. So it could be compiled to a lot of different things if we don't put out some kind of control device or what, uh, Chief Fire just, just, uh, stated.
I agree. And also you dragged my memory, Alderman, uh, something that did never pass the committee in the past. Alderman, uh, treasurer promised to inform our Alderman, we're all together in second ward, brought up, we spent all this money on divisions to the bridge. Never passed an ordinance regulating the amount of weight the bridge hold.
Yes.
Right.
So I'd like to put that up on the next committee and hold discussing.
I think so, as, as well as in our residents, because like in my area, down in part of my area, I'm sorry, like in California garden, you got that, uh, train track right there that borders like Robbins. And those big trucks are taking, uh, things route through the neighborhood.
Yeah.
And I know the, so I think that we need to, uh.
Let's make a broader discussion of it.
Exactly.
Thank you. Any other Alderman comments? City clerk.
Um, we're seeing the hour of city clerk, uh, city clerk club, Saturday, count to four sixteen, from seven thirty to five, and then the, the first Saturday of the month. Because several people call constantly. They want first certificates or they can't get it. They work downtown, they can't get it. Uh, all different kinds of crazy, uh, student problems they had. And so I think by helping, I'm done three to five. And then the first Saturday of the month, we'll start with, it goes good, then we don't, it's all every Saturday, but we'll try and, uh, that's what's kind of.
Thank you, clerk. Any other Alderman comments? Alderman Farinwall?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I, I do wanna, you know, respectfully, uh, just clarify the discussion that was happened earlier in the, the meeting today. Uh, regarding, uh, the hospital and what happened. And the reason I wanna make sure that, at least from my perspective, the record straight. Is that, uh, what happened with the hospital was probably one of the most. one of the most distressing things that happened in my five years here as alderman. And it was made worse so by the fact that at the city council's direction, our law firm negotiated an agreement with the hospital that would have paid us two million dollars for starters and maybe five million dollars, maybe not in total. And that was never part of the course of the council. And it appeared to me, it appeared to be, was obviously blocked by someone who shall remain nameless. For reasons I don't, I don't understand.
Alderman, I disagree and I'm not going to go back and forth. We have our opinions on this, very strong opinions on this. As the former assessor, I know that we collect far more than two million property taxes directly into our tip that we control for street improvements because it's been so long that the tax bill. It doesn't go to the split. And I made this, I think I wrote this up before. How a tip works, it was zero baseline because it was non-profit. We created a tip. We correct a hundred percent of the increase in revenue because it was a for-profit institution. Over the last few years, they've put more than that into the, our tip, you know?
Well, if that's true, I don't want to give it a long debate, but I don't.
I don't need to. I told you, I wrote it up before. I might be in a committee or whatever, but I want to.
I don't know why city council was not permitted to discuss it and it's seen flat out wrong in time. It's seen flat out wrong. And it's one of the reasons that I have extremely cautious to the administration is.
Alderman, I, I knew it's hot, hot question issue. I wanted to respond to some questions brought by former alderman Sebo. I don't want to rehash it. We're not, we're ever going to agree to, we're going to agree to disagree on this.
Right.
But we're making a lot of strides going forward, especially with that situation.
We are fine. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other alderman comments? I'll be jonesing again.
I'm sorry, mayor. Is it possible before the end of the year or like maybe already what, six months already to live stretch?
Don't, don't, don't add few months to me yet, Alderman, please.
Or probably you, I was wondering if you could probably set up something like the state of the union to let people know where we're at, you know what I'm saying? And what projects or whatever we got. You know, I know you're announcing here and there, but if you could like compile it.
I'd like to work on something like that also. Five months, by the way, to get it out myself. So don't add me six months or a minute. But I agree, we should do something like that. Newsletter is going to help doing, but I'd like to do something more formal. Part with the mayor or whatever, a public meeting at night where people can comment their questions and answers. I'm not opposed. As I was stating, I just listed off the stuff for my mayor. Those all within the last couple of days.
Right.
And, and I do, I want to eventually get to a work-life balance, which I never probably get to because of this position, but there's so much stuff I want to get done. And I've mentioned this before, I'm very passionate at getting it done. And taking credit for stuff or making people aware that, that stuff's getting done, that is a priority. Don't want to minimize it, but there's more important getting this stuff done. And I'm never one to jump in front of camera. I actually hate it. There's a lot of stuff we're doing, like the flagpoles. There's a lot of stuff like that. It's an example. It's a lot of little stuff that adds to bigger things. It is, it is something I want to do. It wasn't a big priority. Maybe when I hit the six months, like you said, we can have something. After the holiday or something like that, let's do something like that.
Sorry, one other thing I wanted to ask. I just wanted to thank whoever was involved with getting the, it seems like a more efficient, good quality video and audio system set up for these meetings and I really appreciate that.
The police department headed that, that they've heard our complaints log and clear and they were doing security cameras in the police station and the city hall and they threw this in on us, separate discussions. We talked about what we'd like to get done and
Superd.
It's tied into also, this was more of a priority, but we, we want to do the, the lighting next too, through the grant once it opens up. So that's also tied in from them bringing that up to my attention.
And, and I understand this is being broadcast tonight live, so I appreciate that also. Will we extend this to committee in the hall?
I have an announcement on that. I'm going to make it very soon. It'd be very favorable to, to certain opinions being made. Because again, the committee in the hall, we're not hiding anything. We get a lot of stuff done. As our first meeting had, just like I met with all the aldermen. I've seen both sides. We only recorded meetings about a year, a year and a half or so, committee meetings. And I felt this course went off a ledge once they were put on the camera. Now, if we can get past that, hopefully that's still in this room, even if it's recorded on COVID, hopefully passes us. I have no problem with it. I still have my reservations on, on positive discord. I've seen aldermen in this room outside of ones there are seasons like, like Alderman Fairwell, Alderman Johnson, Alderman Rita, Alderman Carr, some of the newer ones speak less at the, the open meeting like this than at our, our board meeting. I think because of the cameras on.
Yeah.
I want to hear everybody's opinion. And just my own, my own experience in the past, when we sat back there previous to the last couple of years, I felt it was better open discussions. However, that being said, that was my opinion then and still it's my opinion. I'm willing to massage that opinion very soon.
All right. Because I, I actually concur. I, I do agree that ideally it's nice that, you know, more protected environment. However, my feeling is that that's counterbalanced by the need for our citizens to be able to, because the work goes on in there. A lot of it, I mean, we do talk.
We're getting a lot done and I agree. That's one of the reasons why I might change my policy on it because we are getting a lot done. And it's good for the people to know what we're getting done. Like Alderman Johnson, that's what I mean, just reading the list off. You did this, 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 this. They can watch the meetings if they want.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Any other comments? Do we have executive? All right. We need to go into executive session. Is there a motion to go into executive session? Alderman Roll, is there a second? Alderman Rita, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I want. I'm sorry.